Our claims of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with never been just as far.
Our first item of business is approval of the minutes for our last board meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Our next item is the confirmation approval of our claims.
You'll see on your claims document there a total of $322,301.61. And we break that down into our Fund I, the kind of expenditures that we tracked very close, of course, as board. Last year, we paid 85,000, I'm sorry, $99,471.71, as opposed to this year paying $184,656.93. We paid $85,000 more this year. You might recall last month in May, we were under around $50,000, and I told you there that we had made some additional payments during that time, and that it would catch up, and so that's basically what's happening here. The other $30,000 in change comes in to Barstown City Utilities for $21,000. We also have an LG&E bill due to timing that was also paid at $5,000. And then, we had two of our Kentucky, our two payments that we make, April and May, Kentucky State Treasurer for federal health reimbursement was a total of $30,000 also that was due to timing. So, that kind of explains why we're a little bit higher than normal, but everything is on track. I can assure you, if we get to the treasurer's report, I'll be able to show you in more detail in that area. So, we'll be glad to entertain any questions you have on any specific payment that we made.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to have to abstain from voting on this. Apparently, there's an item in here that references to check pay in my business, so I will not be voting on this item. And also, but I do have a question on page 32 of the thumbnail on the bottom, there's an item, $3,360 for a camera. I'm just kind of curious as to what that was.
Sorry, here's the vendor. Do you have that in there?
It says Wayne Supply. It's on page 32 on the bottom, and it's page 27 of the Munis on that particular report.
Is it the purchase of a camera or the rental of a camera?
I'm not sure. It's $3,260. I was just curious what kind of camera it was. Is it a security camera?
Wayne Supply is our bus company.
That's it.
Cameras for the buses?
Absolutely.
All of the buses or?
We now have cameras on all buses, and I'm sorry, I did not have that number on the number that we purchased.
It's kind of stuck out, so I'll just probably ask that question.
When I understand it, did complete the fleet.
Okay.
We now have cameras on all buses.
Thank you.
I can give the answer to that to you and get back.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
There's something we're going to go into a little bit later on. Music therapy services, what is that?
Well, it's for our special needs students. There is just another way to reach some of these students, and we're not necessarily, it could apply to any special needs student, but more of them are seriously handicapped. We have very good luck. For example, nonverbal children will sometimes get involved. It's not necessarily a miracle worker, but they don't speak a lot. They may sing along with the song, clap their hands. I think that's Lorraine Jones, I think, and she just does a remarkable job. That's something I'd like to invite you over sometime to actually witness.
Is that elementary?
It's usually primary elementary, yes.
Any other items for discussion? Say, who approved the claim?
So moved.
Aye, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Our next item is our financial report.
You'll take a look at that first page on treasurer's report concerning the balance sheet there. You will see our verified cash balance per our bank statement, and it's being compared to our cash balance by a fund sheet, as we refer to it there, or two there. You'll notice that those are in balance, they have been reconciled, and there are healthy balances in the fund balances. I think that's something that we always want to keep an eye on at this time of year. This month, I want to inform you that we will be transferring the funds from our capital outlay that you approved recently into the general fund. We will also cover the debt service fund payments made over the course of the fiscal year to balance funds 310, 320, and 400. Those are just our construction type bonds that we've been paying on for some time. We also are on target to end the year with an equal balance to what we had last year, which is very important, that we're able to maintain that contingency as we spend a lot of time talking about that. That's certainly something important to us. And finally, for our fiscal year 2016, we have received the federal grant totals, and this year we have received a smaller amount, about $63,206 less than we did in past years. And that's simply due to the amount of money that's allocated to the state. We have all been given our share of reduction, and this basically is what we're dealing with here, is about $63,206 difference. But, I don't want you to be concerned concerning salaries, programs, we are going to be able to make up that difference. We will be searching and finding ways to cover those expenses. The good news is, it's not all in one area, it's in multiple areas in those federal grants. So, overall, I think you can see that we're in good shape on our report. We can see here that our financial balances are where we want them to be at this time. So, we'd be glad to take any questions that you might have on the financial report.
Will this continue?
On the reductions. Well, in this particular reduction, I don't think it's a significant reduction. I think it's just, $63,000 is a lot of money, but I don't think this is due to any one incident at the federal level. You know, we were pretty concerned a few years ago about some major, major cuts, and I think this is one of those kinds of things that we're just dealing with. No, I don't see it reoccurring. Could be other reasons that may be reductions.
As I understand it, we have a 2% minimum balance?
It's a 2% minimum, yes.
Where do we normally sit, somewhere in the?
It's recommended to be closer to 5.
Right.
We're typically right underneath that 5, we're in between 4 and 5. Do you agree with that?
Thank you.
Any other questions about the financial report? Next, we'll have the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, with your permission, I would like to amend the agenda. I have a special guest coming, and they're actually teaching the class to come talk about, and they're probably just wrapping things up and moving in this direction, so probably within the next five or so minutes, they'll be coming in. So, if that's okay, I'd like to move on to item number 5, please.
Item 5 is approval of the 6/315 payment of fiscal year 15 ending claims.
This is a pretty simple item. We look at this most every year. The way it works is we need to be able to close out the fiscal year 2014-15, and to be able to do that, you have to approve the claims. What you approve today is up to the 16th of June 2015, so there's going to be roughly 14 days left in our month. We're going to need to close that out, so basically what we're doing, we're asking you for permission to go ahead and make those payments for the next 14 days or so, and then we will provide you a copy of those paid claims in a separate report in July. When we do the claims, we will actually be approving two claims, so it'll be the last 14 days of June, and then what we paid up to July.
Included in that, did we have a minor funding problem?
Yes.
About this big ramp?
Yes, that is true, sir.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve the ending claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any more discussion? All those say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right.
We're back to superintendent's report, please.
All right, superintendent's report.
Yes, we're on the superintendent's report. A few years ago, you will recall that we began a STEM initiative here at Barstown City Schools, and our foundation was very generous in providing three years of funding. We are in, beginning the third year of that funding. We've been able to do a lot of things within the classrooms during the school year. One of our very exciting programs that we're able to offer is a summer STEM class, and primarily is for 6th grade students, those going from 6th to 7th grade. And we have been very, very fortunate. We have a teacher that is very qualified, actually worked with Western Kentucky University, and teaches these type of workshops on the weekend. He's a very hard worker. He's been teaching with us for several years, math and science, and we're certainly pleased to have him. He just does a tremendous job. He's highly respected by students, parents, and also his coworkers. He's, Mr. Craig Fry has been teaching our STEM classes. This will be our third year that he's taught there. So, what we've done, we've asked him to come today, and I think he's brought a couple of students with us, for us. He's going to present what this STEM class is all about, the kind of things that his students are learning, maybe the kind of project they're doing this year, and I think his students will be doing a little talking about the project this year also. And I can tell they're very excited about making this presentation. So, thank you all for being here, Mr. Craig Fry.
Thank you. This is the third year of our STEM initiative. The summer camps have been funded completely by the Barstown Foundation for Excellence. We have in the past done a carnival ride camp, the focus on force motion and simple machines. We've done an electric circuits camp. We have done the extraordinary physics camp last year, and this year, we've just started the engineer this camp. All of these camps, in addition to tying in math, science, and engineering, which is part of the next generation science standards, together, they're all project-based, inquiry-based, hands-on, minds-on kinds of things, experiences, learning activities. This last one that we've started this year is also very big into, they call them challenge questions. They're open-ended, problem-solving kind of activities that require you to work with your team. Most of these camps involve working in groups of four. The electronics camp is the only one that was more individual. The rest of them, there is a component that involves working with a group of your fellow students, just like you would in a real-life job work in the adult world, learning to get along and work with other people. It's, they've been a lot of fun to do. This last one that we're currently doing, I think, is pretty close to being the best, although carnival ride was pretty good, too. They just allow us to do things and have materials that extend above and beyond the regular curriculum and materials we have in a regular classroom. So, we're very thankful for the foundation being able to sponsor these things, and we're very happy that we get to offer these opportunities to our STEM students so that they can participate in them as well. And I enjoy, I enjoy working with them, I enjoy teaching these classes, and they've been a lot of fun for me as well. I have two students with me today. I have Andrew Wheatley, and I have Sophia Downs, and they'd like to tell you a bit, not only about their participation in the STEM camps that I've done, in the summer camps, but also the STEM activities they do throughout the school year, the larger picture of the STEM program that we have going on in the middle school. So, ladies first, we'll let Sophia talk first.
I really enjoy all the STEM classes, even though I get pulled out of my regular classes, because it provides more hands-on activity, and if I need help, then a teacher can talk one-on-one with me, and it's a lot of fun.
We've limited these summer camps to about 24 students. There are two constraints, as we're talking about the engineering design process, we're learning about constraints and limitations. As part of this program, too, the kits that we buy have materials for X number of students, so we've kept that number at about 24, just for financial reasons, keep it reasonable. Andrew?
STEM, to me, is like, yes, it is science, technology, engineering, and math, and the GT, as they call it when we get pulled out of class during the school year, well, yes, still have to do work, but we also get to do, on most of the occasions, these projects, and some will get to see that at the end of that day, and some will have to wait a little bit. But, the STEM summer camps, they, like Sophia said, they have a lot of hands-on, and they're mostly hands-on. The only thing that wasn't was at the beginning, when we printed out the engineering and design processes and the scientific method to go over.
Do you want to talk about the field trip?
Oh, yeah.
At the beginning, in 30 years?
We went to ECTC, and I had a lot of fun, even though, like, we got separated, and we went into different classrooms, and we shot potato guns in my group, and I know another group, they did 3D printing, and they made their own name tags after they designed it, and like, if they brought their parents with them, then they could make another one for like, somebody else, and I really enjoyed that.
Any questions you might have for us regarding the STEM program in the middle school or the summer camps, for either myself or our guests?
Tell us about, I think Friday, we have a show-and-tell kind of thing going on, maybe?
For the, for the summer camps, yes, on the Friday, the last day of the summer camp, about, around 11 o'clock, we have a parent showcase, student show-and-tells, if you will, where we do the projects, show some of the projects that we've worked on during the camps, some of the products that we've built, some of the final products we have to show. The kids get a chance to, over a delicious meal of pizza, to share with their parents about some of the things that they've learned during the week that they've been at camp. So, it's usually very well attended, and we've gotten in the past some good feedback from that.
We'd like to invite you to that, if your schedules allow, if you would like to be there.
11, right around 11 o'clock on Friday.
Where?
We'll be doing that in the middle school media center. Yep, right there on the first floor. We do that on the middle school media center.
Board, I will prepare you. Amy Adams is our gifted and talented coordinator and director, and she's doing a wonderful job. Ms. Kara Blackman is working closely with her, and the foundation, Ms. Ken Lacer, they have worked closely with the gifted and talented program. And the STEM initiative is something that we're ramping up, a new phase every year. We started three years ago, and things have continued to rise, and we're excited, want to kind of build anticipation a little bit. We're going to be coming to you and presenting some things to you that we're going to be implementing very soon.
Is that this Friday?
This Friday, yes. 6:19.
Just like to applaud your efforts, because I think sometimes, specifically with the technical aspect of it, it's nice to see that you're working on the balance between the technical and the people skills, because at the end of the day, the end user, you know, you have to be able to sell it, and you have to be able to talk me through it, because, you know, the non-technical aspect of it is important as well.
And that is, the people, we worry about content, content, curriculum, curriculum all the time. The people aspect, especially again with the GT classroom, where you have to work with your partners, and you have to listen to each other, especially these challenge activities we're doing in the current, the current project we have. Yeah, they, there are no instructions in the book. I give them a problem to solve, and they have to figure it out amongst themselves, and so they have to learn how to talk with one another and work with one another, and not just let one person do everything, and that sort of thing. And yeah, those are, those are soft skills or people skills that, that's a nice added bonus as part of these programs.
That's good. We applaud you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the foundation.
Good work. And that completes the superintendent's report today.
Our next item is approval of the 2015-16 salary schedule.
I'm very excited to recommend to you today the 2015-16 salary schedule. This salary schedule includes a much-deserved 2% raise for our employees. We're certainly honored to be able to do this. It will also include a small standard of living raise, which is built into the scale as well. You may recall that two years ago, actually, I guess it would've been three years ago, we're in the second year of a two-year budget. The governor recommended a 1% increase for the first year and a 2% increase for the second year. Our legislators did pass that. This is a mandated raise. However, I just wanted to say that we are very pleased to be able to provide this raise. You will recall from our conversations from last month when we presented the budget, that we did, were able to build in this money, expecting this expenditure, so we do have the funds to cover that. It was a very close coverage, but it does cover it, and we are making it up with a little bit of contingency, but we will get that done. So, I want to remind you, as we look at the salary schedule, and remind you how this works, in the salary schedule, you're not only approving the sales that you see for each of those positions, but also the positions that are included. I did call to your attention, there are two modified positions in there that I wanted to be sure that you were aware of. The finance director position is being modified some, and then the art chair position is being modified some. Both of those are savings in the long run, as I have provided you with that information. The actual art chair position, there will not be a sale for that. That is included in the certified teaching position salary scale, because that is a certified teacher. And we are asking that that person have at least five years of teaching experience, so they will simply just go right on to the certified scale. I would like to address any questions or concerns that you might have at this time.
It's not a concern, but by being able to give a 2% plus, as Cola, what it's done in the past and will continue to do is allow this school to be able to pick and choose the teachers that we get, because of our pay scale, I think that it allows us to be, have a little bit more requirements for the teachers coming in, and that's what it's going to take with all these, the new requirements, and I think it's really good.
I will agree with you. The market is very competitive right now, and I think, I think that, plus, I think the way that this Board of Education treats their employees, being able to provide not only raises, but also a good work environment, and hears their concerns and addresses their concerns. I think that, too, makes this, it is a very competitive market, and to back up what I'm saying, in a recent position that we posted in an elementary school, we had 71 applicants for that single position. So, it shows that it is a competitive market, and the more we can do to get the best folks, I think will put us in a better position to be more successful, obviously. Good point, Mr. Rowan.
Next item?
I want you to, we can approve before you move forward, and keep in mind that you are approving the scale and the modification of those two positions.
Do we have a motion to approve this salary schedule scheme?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Now we can move on.
Now we can move on.
Next is approval of the Nelson County non-resident student agreement.
You are very familiar with this document. I will not take you through page by page of the document, but I will tell you that we've been working on this document since late January. We've had many, many meetings, countless hours, too many to count. Mr. Stone has been involved in some of those discussions as well as I have, and we actually are presenting this to you today. To just summarize, before we cast our votes on it, to summarize, maybe in one or two sentences, what we're saying is that we're agreeing to reduce the number of Nelson County out-of-district students in the Barstown City School System to 400 within 13 years. That's essentially what we've agreed to do. You know, we passed an MOA back in April, and so essentially, what we've done with this contract, that you'll see, that we've just basically tidied up the details, essentially is what happened since April to this time, June 16th. So, what I think would be most appropriate, if you have questions, I know you've had this document in your possession, you were aware of the majority of these, of the items in the contract all the way back to April, and we have had some discussions from February, January, February, March as well. So, I do realize that you may, you may understand this and not have questions, but if there was something in here that you wanted to address at this time, I would like to do that, or if you'd just like to make any comments, we'd like to have those at this time as well.
If I could chime in, just based on my experience with this situation, it was obviously something that ultimately we would have liked to avoid, to have avoided, but I think it was very commendable for Superintendent Ward and the chairman of the Nelson County Board, Mr. Jackie. We all got together in an affable way. At the end of the day, everybody wants to come away with a win-win, but I think primarily due to Mr. Hulseclaw's negotiating skill, we were able to come away with a compromise that we can live with, and I think it's a good agreement.
All right.
So, win-win for both school systems.
Well, it's something that we needed to, needed to address, and I think in this particular 12-page document, we did the best we possibly did. And without extensive litigation or extensive fees, to throw that into the mix is something to consider.
I think that's very important, that you made that point, Mr. Stone. We have saved our local taxpayers a tremendous amount of money based on the other non-resident conflicts throughout the state of Kentucky. We are a rarity in being able to make this agreement without costing us additional money.
Was it bowling green?
Bowling green in Port County.
A million dollars?
Two million.
Two million dollars in bowling green, and they still came up with the same thing after months of discussion.
Well, let's not, yeah.
They paid the way.
Right, they did a lot of work, and we were able to, we were smart enough to follow, take the right directions. All right?
I just want to make a comment, though. You know, we've, part of, I think, what I have always taken away from this school district is that we have always prided ourselves on serving every child who walked through our doors, and, you know, to some extent, it hurts my soul that, you know, that we're not able to do that in some way. But, you know, I think this is, as Mr. Stone said, the best agreement that we came out with, that makes all sides happy. You know, I just hope that, and I like the part in here about helping the families understand the process, and both sides, so that they can, you know, make as smooth a transition as possible.
Are any of you going to comment? I, compared with Jennifer, we've always been willing and able to take any child at any time, and make it possible for them to come to school. That's been the biggest part of it.
So, when we approve this today, if we do, which I'm sure we will, the first line of this agreement is maybe entered into this, what's the date?
16th.
16th?
16th.
So, it's going to be 16th of June?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Is there, is there a meeting today at the?
Yes.
It is.
We'll be transferring our copies of our chair signatures over to them, and they'll use those same copies. use those same copies.
Is there more discussion on that item? If not, we need to go ahead and approve this non-resident student agreement.
Ooh, thank you, ma'am. Can you make a motion to approve, please?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
(laughing).
Okay, you're first next.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. Our next item is the approval of fiscal year 2016 bond depository.
What this essentially means is that we have to select a bank each year. And it's that time of year. Our depository has been Wilson Muir Bank for the last 107 years. We've had an excellent relationship with them, and I think, just put in simple terms, based on our track record, I'd like to recommend we stay with them.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. It's favor of course we need. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That's it. Our next item is approval of the fiscal year 2016 fidelity bonds.
Affidelity bonds, if you're familiar with those, basically give us some protection, a risk of exposure, so to speak. We have two of those that you, that you approve. Just for your information, we have several of these throughout the district, but you're not required by law to approve those. For example, all of our principals are bonded, bookkeepers are bonded, some other central office folks are bonded. But we have Ms. Rogers, our finance director treasurer, we will be bonding her, and also Ms. Janice Stepp, our special tax collector. Those are bonded for up to $200,000. And so, what we need is, first of all, we're required by law to bond them. Secondly, it's a really good idea to bond them. And so, what I'm doing is I'm presenting this to you for approval at this time.
Has it always been, has 200,000 been a standardized number for many years, or has it changed flexually?
No, it has, it has been 200,000 for some time. The other, for your information, at the principal level, for example, is it also 200, or is it 50? It's 50,000 essentially for the, for the rest of them.
One motion, couple of both?
Yes. Oh, it's your pleasure. I don't think you would want to do that unless you, unless you have an issue with one or the other.
No.
We'll take one motion for both. If we can get it.
Somewhere.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll send, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that's it. Our next item is approval of the 2015-16 professional service contracts.
I used to, professional service contracts deal with special education. And we're going to make some changes in the future on this for you, and so you'll be able to see this a little bit better and understand a little bit better. I'm going to tell you a few things about these. We, we have negotiated with multiple people during multiple times over the years. So, you'll see fluctuating rates throughout these therapies that are being offered. Some of them have to do with the number of years that they've been with us, others have to do with the amount of education they have. One may have a master's, the other may not have a master's. And what we'll do in the future is we'll give you something you can compare this to, that will be quite helpful to you. But what I am able to tell you is, when we went back and checked these before the meeting, none of these rates have changed from last year. They are all the same, same rate as last year. And I think that would be helpful for you in the future from now on, and I'll be sure to get that to you. If you have any other questions on those, I do have Mr. Boston here, our Director of Special Ed, can you help us if you have any questions we can't answer on that? But primarily, these are the folks who provide the therapy.
Sorry, my question would be, is, would it be more feasible to ask somebody permanent staff to do these type things instead of always contracting these services out, or is it something that's?
We've discussed different options in the past with that. One thing with occupational therapists, what we see in this region, which is a very, very slim choice of people interested, you know, it's a pretty limited field, and we've had two or three of these individuals who've worked with this school district longer than, you know.
So, these same people contract year over year?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes. And there's, as Mr. Boston was saying, there's just not very many of them. And frankly, they've, they've been very wise in how they've arranged their, their work schedules, where they can work here and work at other places. And, but we are going to look at the possibility of doing 187-day contract. I think that might be a drawback for some of these folks, because then that would cut into.
Limits their other options.
One, for instance, works part-time, she homeschools her children. So, for her, and that's just, that's just kind of an example on why they, I feel that they didn't contract it. And one of them manages some assistive technology for us as well. It's, it's something that we just put in, we have over 200, around 200 iPads in the district, and she manages every single one of them. And sometimes she'll take those type things home. So, although she's not on-site five days a week, she's often doing that at home on weekends and so forth.
Okay.
So, other school systems do the same? I mean, typically, that's the way it's done on these individual services?
Like, like we're saying, is that the market's pretty thin for the little kids.
On the availability of people that can do the job.
Yes. So, they kind of get to set up their own arrangement.
I have a question on, did, because last month, we approved the summer therapy. Did we miss the OT on that? Is that what happened?
Yes, ma'am. I didn't have commitment from any of them. They were checking their schedules, and they didn't get back with me in time of last meeting. And we, we're still working on, we had an idea of which students were going to be transitioning from preschool to kindergarten, but there was a couple of students that parents weren't quite determined whether or not they wanted to, looking at repeating the four-year-over-year program, moving to kindergarten. So, once we had that final say, and had our, our final list of which kids are going from the four-year program to kindergarten, then I got the therapist commitment, and they could set up a schedule with families as well. So, that's why that was, and that's going to start after this week, if approved.
Is there any way we can have information at a future time on, and I know it changes, it's a moving number, but like a general number of how many students there are that qualify for like OT services, how many students are qualifying for speech?
Sure. You wanted that just for the summer program, or?
No, like for year, year.
Okay, yes, ma'am. I can get that several.
Yeah, just to kind of get an average of the number of students we're serving based on the position.
Okay, yes, ma'am. I can do that.
Is that a fairly constant number as well, year over year? I mean, or is it?
Yes, sir. No, it's fairly, it's fairly constant. We've had a rather large increase lately in the amount of students that are getting speech. Some of that's due to the influx of students with autism that we've seen in the district. Some of those came from Nelson County, some of them come from other districts. So, our speech numbers, when looking back, have gradually gone up over the past 10 to 12 years, but it's within 20 to 30 students. But last several years have been fairly constant. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Anything else to say now? We need approval of these artifacts.
Make a motion for it.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's it. Our next item is approval of the 2015-16 local agreement with Central Kentucky Head Start.
That might sound familiar to you. If you think about it, last month, we approved a very similar agreement with Head Start, and done a little research and be able to explain to you what's going on today. The one we approved in May basically said that we would cooperate. Said, it's a, it's a general agreement that school systems will work with them to help them get the number of students that they need, even going so as far as recruiting and things of that nature to help out, which of course, we're thrilled to do. And then, in June, you're being asked to do this again. Why would you be asked to do it again? And here's, here's the explanation. The, some school systems have Head Start incorporated within the school system, and it's called a blended program. Other school systems, like us and Nelson County and our local Head Start, we have a Head Start program separate from the schools. So, basically, it's broken into two agreements. If we were blended, we would have only been doing the one agreement in May. But as it is today, we are doing both agreements. And basically, what we're agreeing to is that we will provide these special ed services. In fact, the ones that we just approved, those therapy-type things, occupational, speech, we will provide to the Head Start program, those children who need the special needs therapy. So, that's what we're agreeing to on today's. Okay? It does seem reasonable that they would wrap both of these into one contract, but when you explain it, whether there's blended programs, separate programs, then we do see the need for it.
And we have been providing these services for a long time.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes. We cooperate in the fullest manner with Head Start. Support their work.
We have an approval?
So moved.
We have a motion? Was that a second?
I have a second. Try to be a second.
Is any more discussion or questions happening? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Our next item is approval of indirect cost rate.
Now, let me see if I can explain this indirect cost rate. This is something we haven't done in the past, but we have been encouraged this year as a school system, I think all the schools of the state are being encouraged to go ahead and set this up. And essentially, what you're doing, you're not approving anything today other than we're looking at this rate that we could engage, I want to give a way to put that, if you so chose to do so. Now, it has to do with the grant programs that we have. And if you'll notice, if you'll go to the back page there, go ahead and go all the way down to that back page and come to the bottom third or the last page, and you'll see non-restricted indirect cost rate, and you'll see restricted indirect cost rate. Okay? So, so what we have is, these are, these are grants, all, all of these are grants, but some of them are looked at differently. And you'll see the non-restricted rate, it's 11.47%. And that's simply, it's different. It's, it's considered an enterprise because it carries a balance. It's things like food service, it carries a balance from year to year. And then if you look at the restricted indirect rate, those, of course, do not, we exhaust those accounts. So, would be all of our title programs, for example. We use that money up every year. There's no balance carried over. And there's no, there are no funds generated throughout the year as you would with, with the food service. But they are considered grants. And so, essentially, what you would be able to do, it's an overhead cost. You would be able to charge, for example, if there's a payroll in food service that is costing money to put that payroll together, then you would be able to take some of that grant money to help pay for that, that preparation of the payroll. That would be one of the better examples I could probably give you on that. So, today, you're not, all you're approving is, is that we would be in a position to use the rate if you chose to. Later on, there's a whole other process we'd need to go through where you would have to...
When you say use the rate, how would we, what application would you use in the rate?
Well, we, we would, we would identify an overhead expense that we thought needed to be addressed.
And then be able to apply funds from?
Right. And if we don't, if we don't do this process, then later on, when we realize that we needed to do it, we wouldn't be able to, because we didn't approve the rate. It's very possible that we would not use the rate, to be honest with you. Very possible. We haven't, we haven't used it in the past. We haven't really seen the need. The state has...
It's nothing new. It's always been there. We just haven't addressed it in this way.
The state has started to encourage school districts to start looking at those federal grants.
And this is just to show cause for using money from the grant?
Yes.
With different MUNIS codes and all this other business?
Yes, you don't, don't be concerned with that so much as, as the rate here.
Does it mean we don't exceed that?
Right. You don't exceed it, and then thank you for making that point. You don't exceed it, and it could be less than that.
So, that 11.47%, is there a value range in there we're wanting to be targeted, be in between, like, so if it was above 15%, we go, oh, yeah, we got a problem here. We're spending too much money on something. Is there a?
It, it's possible. Look, I don't think that, that was the, the reason for it. I think it seems arbitrary.
It allows districts to recoup the cost of what it may be to run those programs than us federal programs.
But nothing shoots a red flag out if you end up, you know, their head number ends up being 17% or something.
Thank you, Tracy.
I don't think so.
White, okay, Mark. Understand? Thank you.
But there should be a minimum amount of...
Yes. Right. Exactly. And of course, right now, the amount is zero. So, give us an option.
All right, then.
So, you're just approving the indirect rate today, and you're not applying any of it?
What do you think?
And if I may say, this rate is determined by the expenditures on our annual financial report. So, it's not anything that we have done other than provide that information to KDE, who calculates what our rate is. So, this information is from KDE.
It's not just a figure pulled out of the air. It's based on actual expenditures.
Certain criteria only, yeah, can be included.
All right.
Are there recommendations that we do?
Encouraging them to approve the rates only.
Okay, is there a motion? Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Our next item is the approval of emergency substitute certification.
Ask Mr. Downs to come forward at this time to let us know what this is about. I did not get anything in your packet concerning this. In the future, I'll be sure to get a mail out for you, but...
Well, it's, it's pretty simple. What we do is every year, when we get an application from somebody wanting to be a substitute, we have to send that into the stands board. And we do that all under one umbrella. So, instead of having to get every one of those approved every time that we have one, we get you all to approve a substitute certification number, and then we send them all in under that certain number. And so, normally, we do that in the summertime, so then when the applications start coming in for substitute teachers, we can send it all in under one umbrella. That's essentially what it is.
And in the past, we had, we had to do each and every one?
Yes, we did this last year, the same thing last year, but before that, we had to every, I don't know if you remember, but every board meeting, we approved substitutes. And so, we don't have to do that anymore when we do it through this process.
This takes care of the rest of the year?
Takes care of the rest of the year and makes them not, it streamlines the process for us all.
Is there an abundance of substitute teachers available?
No. Everybody struggles with substitutes.
Qualified?
Yes. And they, you have to have 64 hours at least of college credit to be able to get your certificate from the stands board, be able to be a sub. And so, we all, all districts struggle with, with enough subs. But we, we do a pretty good job on, on a daily basis, but sometimes we come up a little bit short, but not very often. But we're, we're always up there trying to find, find more subs.
Is there a GPA requirement also?
It's, it's 2P, 2.0 GPA, as well as that 64 hours of, of college credit, I believe is what it is. I'll, I'll try to figure on it, Mr. Obi, but it's, they have to go through the stands board and present their information to the stands board in your pocket, and then they'll get a certificate that they are able to sub. And we store those in their folders each year.
I think that the page is 2.5.
It may be. I may be wrong on that, but I'll, I'll double check for you. Okay?
If there are a motion to approve this emergency substitute certification, I guess we'll pass it.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Those opposed? We have a leave of absence request.
So we have Amanda Grubbs, who is a special education instructional assistant at Barstown Primary, and I think she has a very good reason for asking for a leave of absence. She's going to be working on and completing her student teaching, which is awesome, that she's going to be moved from one position hopefully to a teaching position very soon, if not here somewhere else, but she's, she's a very good reason to be asking for a leave of absence, so we'll approve that.
Is there a motion to approve Amanda Grubbs' leave of absence request?
Stone, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Our next item is personnel resignation, return.
I just make you aware of those four there in your packet, and that's all we have concerning that.
Where's Mr. Good going?
I think Mr. Good is going to Maru County, yes.
And you can tell we have our site-based decision-making council minutes in our packet. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Yes, please, please.
I'm Jack Hurst. I'm with the local shirt shop here in town. I'd like to, to make the board aware of the fact that they owe me, or I shouldn't say they, getting my pronoun, you all, or the, or the school system owes me a bill that's been outstanding for some, over some three years. It started out as a, and I'm trying to be polite as I say this, it started out as a, it was an intertwined of things, it was $4,200 is what it was, some three years ago for a Christmas basketball tournament with some other things involved. Because of the boys and the girls coats, I was asked to parlay or put off paying to that bill some three years ago. I agreed to do so. The can is, just continually, continually got kicked down the road. Before Jamie Neal left her position here last year, it was agreed upon between herself and myself and Clark, your athletic director at high school, that, and don't even ask me how we got to $1,800, but they would pay $1,800, and we just, the rest of it just go away. Well, since then, since then, Mr. Clark's memory has, has somewhat changed. I was neighbor corner, I, I finally tracked Mr. Pickett and Mr. Clark down, and Mr. Pickett's office during the school Christmas break. At that time, I was informed, it was, the whole thing had never, basically never happened, it was never owed, that one of my employees was, had signed off that we owed nothing. And then my whole objection to this whole thing was just the fact that my daughter's playing time on a basket, girls' basketball team. I, since then, have asked them several times, Mr. Pickett, who seemingly every time he talks, his nose grows, was supposed to produce paperwork for me, to where my former employee signed off on this, but their insistence was that it was all about playing time. That's why we're here now. I waited until after the girls' basketball season, I waited until after graduation, because I assure you, my daughter was embarrassed not to play, not, not to play, but to play, okay? But now, all that's since removed, that's since passed, and we're still in the same predicament. I'd like for y'all, you know, at this point, I'd just like to be paid. Thank you for your time. Does anybody have any questions for me?
And you say you have met with Mr. Pickett?
I've met with Mr. Pickett several times.
And you did, you, okay, and you did have this, this arrangement to, for them to purchase the shirts, came from the high schools, is that what you're saying?
It came, it came from, it was, it was a mixture of things. It was girls' basketball, it was, it was all basketball-related.
But it was in the high school basketball program, is that what you're saying?
And, and it had to do with, the first year that Jamie Neal was here, it had to do with that Christmas tournament. A, a large portion of that bill had to do with that. That's when it started. They had other bills, they wanted to meet a parlay, basically payment, and just pay me later. We met with you, and part of the reason we was throwing those basketball tournaments and things was to offer them a reason, a way to pay it out and make some too. And at the last meeting that I had solo with Clark, which was over a year ago, he was going to be the one to take the, the, the school entity, that was going to, we were doing the basket, running the basketball stuff, and he was going to be the school entity. That fell by the wayside. So I even offered you a solution to pay it, and still didn't get there.
We'll be in touch with the high school, and then be in touch with you.
At, at this point, at this point, basically, what's happened is, is, is I'm waiting for Mr. Pickett to come up with a piece of paper where a former employee of mine supposedly signed off on this, saying it's all for naught, it's, it's all been satisfied.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hurst, what did you provide?
It, it was shirts, trophies, it was a combination of things, tennis shoes. Not all of that had to do with the girls' basket, I mean, with that tournament, which was, it was a mixed tournament, if you can remember back to three years ago. But it was a mixture of stuff. And then how we came to $1,800, it was just a figure, everybody was compromised on, and so at that point, there is no atomization of the bill, it was just an agreement.
I'll look in there for you.
Thank you.
Are there any others? Hearing none, we need a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We adjourn.